Johnson Chapel. So Chapel, we're glad to have you here. And then after that, we're gonna have our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just thank you, Lord God. I uplift the city council meeting to you, Lord God. And I just pray that you just set the atmosphere in this place by your Spirit, oh God, and rest every individual's spirit in him, Lord God, and soften their heart and mind, Lord God, that they will be able to hear and listen, oh God, and that everything will be accomplished, oh God, and that wise decisions will be made, oh God, for the benefit of everyone, oh God, for the benefit and the greater good of all people, oh God. We pray, oh God, that those decisions happen and that wise decisions are made, oh God, and that it will prosper the community, oh God, and advance it, oh God, in a direction that you believe it should go. In your holy name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chapel. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Next, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. And in the audience, we have De'Quan Rowe. De'Quan, come up here and help us. De'Quan is a student at Eastern Wayne, and he's here for his scout project or scout merit badge. So he's gonna come up here. Come right up here, buddy. And there's your flag, and you tell us when you're ready.
Please, gentlemen, Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young man. Very good job. All right.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
You did good.
Keep coming.
You're doing good.
De'Quan.
Good job.
All right. Thank you, De'Quan. With that, we have the roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Prokhorov.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Adams.
Here. We're all here. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, for adoption.
So moved.
Any discussion? All players raise your hand. Opposed likewise. Minutes carried. Presentations. First, we have the Mental Health Month proclamation. Does anybody hear from the mental health? Now, look, well, I should've known right on the front. Well, shouldn't I? All right, well, let me read this real quick, then, and then I'll get you up, Ms. Emily. "Mental Health Month proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. Whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and the effect of treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full and productive lives. Whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and the responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, Chuck Allen, do hereby proclaim May twenty, two thousand eighteen as Mental Health Month in the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina. As mayor, I call upon all our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Goldsboro to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions." So, Ms. Emily, if you come up. First, I know you got something you're gonna wanna say, so come on up and talk.
How would you know that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you to the council. We do want to acknowledge that this is Mental Health Month. Also, with me, I have board member Bobby Jones, and also representing East Point, our local community agency, is Vanessa Hill. And we are hopeful that people will be more aware. We can have an opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, to bring community to learn more about anxiety. I will leave these here for some of the listeners to hand out to the councilmen, and we hope that she will try to come and learn more. But Dr. Stephanie Peters from Trig Hospital will be the presenter. And we thank you for your time in recognizing the need for more mental health services and awareness.
All right. You good?
Yes.
Come on, Bobby. Feature looking, please, actually.
I'm glad that you're around. Thanks very much.
All right, so the next one we have is Military Appreciation Month. Does anybody here for military appreciation? We're doing good tonight. All right, so let me read this real quick. "Military Appreciation Month. Whereas our brave servicemen and women, their families and their loved ones share and support and sacrifice to the district for our freedom. And whereas this proclamation marks the beginning of Military Appreciation Month, a month in which the Department of Defense and our grateful nation will honor the courage, commitment, and selfless service of our military. Whereas community members, businesses, military bases, and posts and other organizations are encouraged to recognize military members and their loved ones with special events such as family activities, community gatherings, sports events, retail discounts, and other forms of special recognition throughout the entire month of May. Whereas military-connected nonprofit organizations, veterans, service organizations, and other military service survivors, both public and private, are encouraged to band together to honor and serve our military members and their loved ones during the month of May. Therefore, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May two thousand eighteen as Military Appreciation Month, and officially recognize the many sacrifices made by our veterans, service members, wounded warriors, their families, and their survivors, as well as the vast network of organizations that serve the heroes across the state." Well, the only thing I wanna say is I think we do this every day in Wayne County and Goldsboro. We know what our military means to us, they know what we mean to them, and we have as good a military relationship, I think, as anywhere in the country. So I think we do practice this, we don't just talk this, and I do think that's something very important. But, so we will recognize it more in May, but I hope we do this all the time. You wanna talk?
Sure.
I know you, just like Ms. Peacock, I know you got something to say.
So I'm here representing the Goldsboro Elks, and we will be holding the Second Annual Wings of Wayne Military Appreciation Festival Memorial Day Weekend, two oh seven South Center Streets of the impial lot, right downtown on Center Street. The event will run on Saturday from one to six. Admission is free, we have live music, we'll have spare change, Big Island coconuts, and mountain sweaters entertaining the crowd, family-friendly environment. We'll have military appreciation awards presented, as well as Chicken Wing Cook-Off, which is the Wings of Wayne. So we'll get bragging rights and a brand prize package valued over a thousand dollars. Then on Sunday, the second day of our activities, we will hold the Second Annual Down East Rolling Thunder, which is a motorcycle rally from Veterans Memorial Park downtown Goldsboro to the Kinston Veterans Home, where we'll just hang out for the afternoon with our heroes that now call that facility their home. So appreciate all of your support and hope the public will come out and support the event again big this year.
Well, I absolutely encourage you to come out, and I will tell you, the Chicken Wing Park is the best park, 'cause I get a judge, so it's a good chicken. Okay, so next on our agenda is our public comment period, and this is a time where anybody from the public can come and speak up to three minutes on anything concerning the city. We have had a request by Ms. Shirley Edwards to speak a little bit longer, and she's gonna come first. Let her come, and then we'll call on you, okay? So Ms. Edwards, go ahead, and you have a little longer than three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Allow me to thank Mayor Allen and Mrs. Simpson Carter from the best community development for coming out last Tuesday, participating in our poverty simulation. Also, Councilman Williams came out and signed the register, but he elected not to participate. But we do thank them for being present. And while I'm thanking people, I want to thank Councilman Ham for some weeks ago bringing up the issue of the city's role in eradicating poverty, when you made the effort to do that presentation, pulling those reports that the city has done over the years, that they have not completed the work. I thank you for doing that, and I hope that you will give it some of your quality time to ensure that we continue to do this. This is a problem in the city of Goldsboro, when fifty-two percent, or a little over that, of your people of color and your children are living in poverty. You have a big problem, and I think that we need to keep addressing it, and we will keep it in the forefront of you. I hope that you will take heed to what I've said. Not preaching, but I want you to take heed to it, because it's a serious issue. In the city of Goldsboro, it's a generational problem, and if you don't start with this council, where do you start? Okay? Oh, we know that there are many reasons why people are in poverty. A few of them, as I said, is generational, historical, discrimination, the whole American system that was developed, laws, geographics, and the list goes on. Some things that we as citizens of goodwill can change, as I said. Those brought on by institutions, we can work on them, and we can change them. Education, we can do some better, housing, judicial, employment, and the social part of it. There are areas we must address if America is to progress. We must avail ourselves to accurate facts and proceed with our responsibility. And when I say "our," it's all of us, not just y'all, but the audience here, those listening tonight, it's everybody's responsibility. And until we all put our hand to the fire, nothing is going to happen collectively. A, our approach to job development. It dismisses many of our people who are looking to work. They don't have a chance in the job market. They have limited education, and we don't have a lot of jobs for people with limited education. Those returning from our penal system, they're left out of the whole process. We have not had a process that welcomes them back. I hope that we'll work on that in the coming year and coming time, because they've served their time, they've paid their dues, and we need, as a city, and many cities are doing things. You know, they have second chance programs, they have a lot of programs they're doing. So we gotta do more. We have some programs, but they are not enough. And even those people who try to work the resources that they need to get to work, we did them the other day, Mayor Allen, in that simulation. You experienced those obstacles, I think you couldn't get to work. It's impossible for many of them to maintain their employment, simply because if they get the job, they may not have a car to get back and forth, they may not have no gas, they may not have a way to get there. I watch over and over people trying to get to what we call the church plan, with no way to get there. And some of them get off their shift and have to wait a whole eight hours for another shift to catch a ride back. You know, that's, you know, we're not doing what we need to do for our citizens. B, our present educational system seems far removed for it to be designed to provide a quality education for all children. Some of the lowest functioning schools are in our districts. The teachers do not have adequate supplies and resources to help the children. We have some of these low-functioning schools with the highest number of first-year teachers. That's not fair to the first-year teachers. It's certainly not fair to the children. But, you know, that's what we're living with. And these people live in these low-income areas, they don't have the resources to give the children what they need, the books, the trips, the other kinds of things that they need. So we've got to look at how we can be innovative. There are other cities and towns that do innovative things. In Michigan, in Pennsylvania, they have programs where when college, high school students graduate, they help them with college tuition. There are a lot of innovative things that we could be doing that we're not doing. And I'm here to help with those innovative things, and there are lots of people who want to help with those innovative things. The people that fail, you know, we lambaste them for failing. When they truly come out of high school, they get in trouble, they fail. But what we should've been doing is talking positively and working with them while they were in high school. You know, we blame them, you know, for what they can't change. The, I think that one of the things that I look at that, where we come short is, we have agencies that are supposed to be providing service to many of our peoples. They have mandates to provide their services, but many times, those most in need do not receive the services from them. I'll give you an example. Some, a month, over six weeks ago, a group of us did some talking to people out in Seymour Johnson Homes and some other places, and it's not with the poverty group, this was Independence with NAACP and some others. And we spent a lot of time out there. And most of the people shared with me, and I have the notes, and they have their notes, the services they're saying that they need are the services that we say we provide. So it means that we're providing services with our agencies that are not getting to the most vulnerable of the population. So I think that we need to, people in leadership such as you, need to question if we as agencies, and I don't represent an agency, but I say "we," I have, we need to be sure that they are meeting the mandate for what they are being funded for. We commend, continue to make laws that criminalize the poor. Laws are written with enough loopholes in them that persons with means can move in and out of the judicial system without a criminal history. However, a poor person does not have the monetary resources, nor the time to navigate that system. Poor youth are not so fortunate as to get a slap on the wrist, they get a criminal record instead. The norm for them is to plead guilty or plead bargain, and this can be worse sometime than allowing the case to go to court. This was brought home to me last week when I was in South Carolina, talking with lawyers there about their judicial system and the things that could be done, and they shared these kind of things with me. So I think there's more of that we can do. We're destroying young people's future before they ever get a chance to do anything. I believe that a viable first step for the city is an effective community policing program developed in collaboration with the communities, looking at the unique needs of its neighborhoods. The social conditions of Goldsboro affect every aspect of poverty in Goldsboro, recognizing the minority of the victims are our elderly and our children. While addressing the elderly, I am asking the city to do a moratorium to stop the demolition in these neighborhoods. Look at what we can do to revitalize neighborhoods as opposed to always tearing them down. It isn't so much that we need more and more housing, we got plenty of housing, but people can't maintain their housing. You got senior citizens out there that get old, they're on fixed incomes, they don't have a means by which to keep their houses up. And so at some point, and I can, and I watch them every day, I knew a lady that stayed in a house for years, now it's boarded up. It's sad, because once the income shifts, spouse dies, or someone who's working in that household leaves, then the income is not there. And so therefore, they don't have the money. And what happens is, sooner or later, they end up going to a nursing home. Or, and many of these worked all their lives to buy one little extra house. They saw that as their resource for when they would be on that fixed income, and they could then have that as to supplement their income. I know a lady on North End, her husband, Mrs. Butler, same, the same thing happened to her. When her husband died, she had no means to continue, so she lost all of those houses. She died in abject poverty. She used to have to go around borrowing money to make ends meet. That's disgraceful that we allow this to happen to our citizens. I, there's a need for the community and the city to work together to develop programs where we can do something about these senior citizens' homes. And there, it's not one neighborhood, they're on Wayne Avenue, they're on North End, they're all over. We've got to do better. So I'm asking you to do this moratorium, stop tearing down. You make holes in good neighborhoods. A house is a good house, right across the road, it's boarded up, because the people could not stay there, and sooner or later, we come and tear them down. That's not right. We can't continue to do that. If you don't think it's important to senior citizens to be in their own home, then I challenge each of you to go one day and deliver meals with McWages Meals on Wheels, and let these senior citizens tell you how important it is for them to stay in their home. We have a hundred-year-old lady is in her home right now, because she has the support. We agencies, with the cities, all of us have got to come up with ways that we can support the people like this. It's just not right. You know, this is a sorry way that we reward our elderly citizens, and all of us who meet all of y'all, on your way there if you live, and I know you want to live. Also, our tenure meetings regularly, and I watch us in these meetings do things to help the haves have more. So let's do more to help the have-nots have more, okay? There is, as I said, no real great need for additional rental units. The goal of ninety-five percent, I rent houses, and I can tell you that everybody wants to own their own house. They don't have the means, but there are cities that help people. There are programs, federal programs, where you help people. Years ago, we claimed we were gonna do some of that, agents to hear, it never materialized. We got plenty of public housing, you know, for people out there. For the homeless, we got plenty of housing. The only group we don't have, we got the Fordham House, we got the DAV program, we got Salvation Army, Goldsboro Housing Authority, you can, if you need it, be less than twenty-five dollars a month. We got Habitat helping us, but the only thing that we're short on right now is a home for women, a shelter for women. And that has been in the works for two years, but the agencies that is in the work with it has to improve some internal things. And the money is there, and when they meet those guidelines, they will be that program there. I've worked with that agency. So we're doing those things. I say that to say this, that sometimes, we don't have the facts about what the need is in the community. Everybody that looks disarrayed and homeless and not homeless, some people just look that way, because that's their God-given right, you know, to look that way, homeless. But everybody that does not, that looks homeless is not homeless. And I give you a case in point. There's an African-American male that hangs around the, you see him sitting around, all of y'all that goes downtown by the courthouse, he sits there, and to the observer, he would look like a textbook case of homelessness. However, the historical facts are different. He gets a check, he has a loving family, siblings, nieces, cousins, nephews, who would desire to help him and for him to live with them. And this is the clincher of it all. He actually has a house. His mother and father left him a house to live in, but he doesn't want to live there. And the house is habitable. It has five or six bedrooms in it. And because this is not what he wants, he does not live there. Now, how do I know that? Because he's my brother-in-law. So I know this, and the family, and I talk about it all, the family met, got together last weekend in Maryland, and we still want him to be a part of it, but that's his right. This is a young man that, he's not a veteran, he is a young man that had a nervous breakdown in college, his second year. And he came home, he went into the hospital, he was hospitalized, he does not want to be back in the system. Hospitalization is not what he wants, he does not want treatment. So you cannot take away from him his rights. He was an excellent student in high school, he was artistic, talented, gifted young man. And as Emily talks about mental health, I spent my career in mental health, and I know that we're not doing enough for the mentally. So I am so happy that I'm making this presentation at the time that Mental Health Association Month. But I say that to say this, that we may look at people and assume one thing, but if you don't take the time to learn and to do this, then you cannot effectively help me or anybody else, and that seems to be missing a lot of time. In closing, gentlemen, I thank you for this opportunity. And not only me, you've been given an opportunity. You've been given an opportunity to serve your community. You ran on that commitment, you wanted to serve your community. And what I'm asking you, to do the remainder of your term, to do a greater job in serving your community, and work with all of your citizens out there, not just in your district, but with all of the citizens. Because some of you may not want to run again, some of you may want to run again, but these questions and these concerns will be brought up to you if you run again, and for those who don't want to run again. What legacy will you leave? How will people remember your term? I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening.
I have a question for every one of y'all sitting up there. Do I have a right to feel safe when I come out of my building?
I would hope so.
Well, guess what? You're wrong.
Okay. Why am I wrong?
I have called the police three times on one man that runs down the sidewalk throwing over trash cans, pulling off his shirt, putting it back on, getting out in the street, stopping traffic, coming up on me and my disabled cousins, and wanting to fight with us. I called the police. Third time I had called the police on him. They finally came down and gunned him. What did they do? They let him go. Now, I'm gonna tell y'all something, and especially for you, Mr. Scott Stevens. If I come out of my building and I get hurt, I'm not knocking your doors, and I've already got an attorney lined up to do it. I can't have a gun in my building. But I have, with the permission of the police department, with the permission of David Williams, to have throwing knives on me as long as the police can see him. I will not go up on anybody. I will not start a ruckus with anybody. But I can guarantee every one of y'all sitting up there behind that, whatever you wanna call it, I'm not taking nothing off of nobody. I lived for the first twenty-four years of my life in mortal terror. That's over with now. I'll be seventy years old next month, and I can guarantee you, I ain't taking it off of no idiot that wants to walk up and down that street wanting to throw punches at me and wanting to call me names and wanting to attack my cousin who, at fifty-two, has arthritis so bad she can't stand up straight, does not have a straight finger on either one of her hands. But I can promise y'all this, if I get hurt and the police don't do anything about it, if they keep letting them go, that's gonna be hell to pay, because I am sick and tired of it. I've been in that building for fourteen years now, and it's getting worse and worse and worse every day that goes by. I saw somebody run into his ice storm one night, and I thought it was somebody trying to break in. I got my cane and went after him, turned out that he was going in there to use the bathroom, but I was gonna beat the living snot out of whoever it was if they had broken that place. Now, y'all can take it for watching me, every one of y'all, every one of y'all up there, you feel like you got the right to be safe, don't you?
I think we all have the right to be safe, ma'am.
All right, then you and you need to get on the police department and make them do their jobs, and if you can't do it, then I will.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else?
You ready? Let's go.
Hi, how are you all doing today? There's so many things, honestly, I wanna say, but I'm gonna kinda bring it all in. I'm from District One, and the situation that had been going on with our councilmen is very disheartening to us. I know someone wrote an anonymous letter, but for us, it was like no one cared about the district. Honestly, Mr. Williams and Mr. Foster, and it's not even his district, have
And what I'm asking you, to do the remainder of your term, to do a greater job in serving your community and work with all of your citizens out there, not just in your district, but with all of the citizens. Because some of you may not want to run again, some of you may want to run again. But these questions and these concerns will be brought up to you if you run again. And for those who don't want to run again. What legacy will you leave? How will people remember your term? I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I have a question for every one of y'all sitting up there. Do I have a right to feel safe when I come out of my building?
I would hope so.
Well, guess what? You're wrong.
Okay, why am I wrong?
I have called the police three times on one man that runs down the sidewalk throwing over trash cans, pulling off his shirt, putting it back on, getting out in the street, stopping traffic, coming up on me and my disabled cousins, and wanting to fight with us. I called the police. Third time I had called the police on him. They finally came down and gunned. What did they do? They let him go. Now, I'm going to tell y'all something, and especially for you, Mr. Scott Stevens. If I come out of my building and I get hurt, I'm knocking on your doors, and I've already got an attorney lined up to do it. I can't have a gun in my building. But I have, with the permission of the police department, with the permission of David Williams, to have throwing knives on me as long as the police can see him. I will not go up on anybody. I will not start a ruckus with anybody. But I can guarantee every one of y'all sitting up there behind that, whatever you want to call it, I'm not taking nothing off of nobody. I lived for the first twenty-four years of my life in mortal terror. That's over with now. I'll be seventy years old next month, and I can guarantee you, I ain't taking it off of no idiot that wants to walk up and down that street wanting to throw punches at me and wanting to call me names and wanting to attack my cousin who at fifty-two has arthritis so bad she can't stand up straight, does not have a straight finger on either one of her hands. But I can promise y'all this. If I get hurt and the police don't do anything about it, if they keep letting them go, that's going to be hell to pay because I am sick and tired of it. I have been in that building for fourteen years now, and it's getting worse and worse and worse every day that goes by. I saw somebody run into his ice storm one night, and I thought it was somebody trying to break in. I got my cane and went after him. Turned out that he was going in there to use the bathroom, but I was going to beat the living snot out of whoever it was if they had broken in that place. Now, y'all can take it for watching me, every one of y'all, every one of y'all up there, you feel like you got the right to be safe, don't you?
Then we all have the right to be safe, ma'am.
All right, then you and you need to get on the police department and make them do their jobs. And if you can't do it, then I will.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Good evening, ma'am.
Yep, hi, how are you all doing today? Um, there's so many things, honestly, I want to say, but I'm going to kind of bring it all in. Um, I'm from District One, and the situation that had been going on with our councilmen, very disheartening to us. I know someone wrote an anonymous letter, but for us, it was like no one cared about the district. Honestly, Mr. Williams and Mr. Foster, and it's not even his district, have come out and picked up trash in our district, have literally paid people's rents who did not have money. Like, they have shown, Mr. Williams has shown, he really cares about the people in our community. Um, and I felt like for leaders to go off of hearsay and gossip was really big because it shows the trickle-down effect of our community. When you look at poverty, like we said before, it's a mindset, not just about money. And when we have a petty mindset to where we go off gossip and hearsay and not really focus on the good, focusing on negative things, um, it really, it really brings up a lot of questions in our mind as to what our leaders are truly doing and thinking. Um, I'm in the five o'clock meeting, I'm listening to just possibly spending twenty thousand dollars on marketing. It's absolutely crazy. All I see happening is the people here looking to bring outside people in. There are people in Goldsboro who want to open a business, who would bring jobs here, but the opportunity is not here because a lot of our leaders act off of hearsay, gossip, and pettiness, and not really focusing on us as a people. Because there's hundreds of people in this city who could open a business, give people jobs, create something, but that money is always being invested in bringing outside people in. Nobody's focusing on the people that live right here in the city. There's a hundred men who have lawn care businesses who could be, put that, give them five thousand dollars and see what they could do. You know, and it's just like, where are your hearts really at? So we're talking about a city and an oath under God. Once again, God is not a person, place, or a thing. It's a consciousness of perfect love. And I don't feel like you love half of the population of this city because you don't think about them when you make your decisions at all. You got one anonymous letter, you didn't think about all the people he's helped, though? We've never had lights in my neighborhood, we've never had dirt roads. You've been on the council for twenty years, ain't nobody even thought about our piece in North End? Nobody. So when you have people with a good heart, when you choose to pick and choose your battles. So like, as leaders, until you step it up, can't nothing else happen because the leaders and the followers are equal. You can't be a leader unless somebody's following you. So I think we're just as important as you are. And I don't think you're focusing on us. Poverty is a mindset, and the mindset is that our people, our leaders in Goldsboro are greedy, petty, selfish, and they go off of what they want to do, not what's really, really best for the people. Because I don't think you've thought about us. I've lived in Goldsboro my whole entire life, and it's just amazing to see more people who've lived here for five years or came off the base being positions when it's people that's lived here for forty years that couldn't even get a position. So I'm just asking you to think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs, I really appreciate it, Dan.
Would Dan Brown like to speak?
Good evening, sir.
What's up, Sal? Um, we're going to continue to talk about this park issue. Okay, I appreciate y'all got the water fountain out there working, that's cool. You took down two basketball goals, but it's been like a whole month since we had this conversation.
I understand.
So I think you should put two basketball goals up before Memorial Weekend because kids are going to be in town to play at the park.
Okay.
And secondly, um, should we, instead of turning out a tennis court, just make it a racquetball court? Build a wall for racquetball, like, you know, you can sell pads, learn passing drills, all types of stuff with that one wall. You do a lot of stuff with the wall. Open the tunnel up so kids can walk to the park without going around the main streets. And then, on top of that, the park equipment, like, you should add more things for the kids to play with, like merry-go-rounds, more things for them to do at the park, so it makes people want to come to the park. Just upgrade the baseball field that used to be there. Let's try to get like some programs where like, we're seeing like people out there, like to start basketball tournaments in North End Basketball Park. Or start a little baseball league out there, or a little soccer tournament. Like, if you don't do anything in the park, who's going to think about the park? You feel me? Like, just try to do that. And on top of that, like, can y'all use my email, ryansharper29@gmail.com to keep me updated with what you're doing at the park? Like, we just, every month when I come here, we're just going to talk about things to upgrade the park till we get the park up to satisfaction.
What's that for the twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine at gmail dot com. So you know, like, we're not going to put you in ten different directions at one time. So me as a citizen, we're going to, we're going to put all of my thoughts in what we're going to do at North End Park. We're going to upgrade that park, then once we do that, we'll move on to another subject. Because we can't do a thousand things at once. But if I give you ten things to do, you can do one thing, you can say you did something, but you ain't did nothing. You feel me? So we're going to just keep that upgraded, we're going to try to upgrade this park where it's nice like Berkeley Park or Herman Park, and it's just regular parks, like, it's a, it's a small income park area, you feel me? So like, if you give them something to look forward to, to do, maybe they might upkeep the park. Maybe more people might try to do more things around the park, maybe the kids interact more. Maybe more like Sunday activities, anything, you know, anything like that, you know? If you can hit my email, we can come up together, some of this community, people, me, you, you, you know, it's like you, you people, and help people out, me, you know, we make something happen in North End Park together.
I'll be happy to work.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, bud.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Good evening.
Hi, I wanted to address the paintballing situation.
Okay.
Um, I just, I'm not blaming anybody up there for anything that's going on. I just want to say that as young men, they don't need to be playing paintball.
Okay.
Because I know people say, well, at least they're not killing people, it's paintballs, not bullets, but it could always be bullets. People die every day, but that doesn't make it regular. And we shouldn't be rewarding them by playing paintball just because they're not killing people. That's not what's supposed to happen. So for them playing paintball, they need love and discipline, not entertainment and to just be around playing paintball where they should be getting a job opportunity or an education. And I just want you to think about how useless it is for them to be doing something like that when there's so many other things in the city that could be done and that you could be using them to help do. It's their community, and they could help fix it, not play paintball.
Okay, well, I have a different opinion with you, so I'm going to tell you my opinion, okay? First off, what we're having to do with paintball is me personally, it's not the council. The council's not endorsed it. Okay, my belief is two, two or three things. First off, paintballs is better than bullets, I truly believe that. These young men are shooting each other with bullets. I want them to stop shooting each other with bullets. Number two, we need to have relationships. They don't trust us, they don't trust the police. So I'm trying to give them a venue where we can go in, they have a place to shoot paintball, nobody bothers them. It's not costing them anything. Something I've donated to them, I'm trying to build relationships with. I go up there almost every day and talk to them. I've met gang members I don't even know who are, and we, and we're trying to get the police in there. We're talking about even trying to have a police slash gang paintball competition because you have to build relationships so that you understand each other, so that we know where they walk. You can criticize them all you want, but I can tell you, until we build relationships and we trust each other, nothing's going to come out of anything that we're trying to do. You can't, we can't police our way out of what's going on on these streets. We've got to figure other ways to do it. This is one of my ways of trying to reach out and do something different. Somebody might not agree, this council might not agree, that's perfectly fine. But as mayor, I'm going to continue to do what I can do to build relationships with everybody I can to try to make the city better. You can argue all day long, they could be picking up garbage, they could be getting jobs, all that. You know, I'm not, I'm just trying to stop people from shooting each other right now, okay? And I'm trying to build relationships. And once we do that, then we can work on the other minor skills. So just to give you my side, okay?
Well, I mean, I'm going to interject real quick. I understand what the young lady is saying. Um, I understand your position, but, you know, we had several shootings over the weekend. So it didn't, paintball didn't stop it, and it's not going to stop it, you know? Um, I, I think that grown men should be finding something else to do, personally. Um, if they, to, to me, if, once that building was donated to them, and you told them they could use it, they should have said, well, we're going to do some programming for kids. Y'all come over and help these kids out. You know, let's do something like that, but not grown men shooting around, sitting around shooting paintballs. Um, I think there's other ways for the police to act, to interact with the community besides a paintball game as well. Uh, we need a lot more community policing, uh, police need to be on the streets. They need to be walking, they need to be going to houses, talking to people. Uh, paintball is not going to solve anything, and I disagree with the young lady and what she's saying. I thank you for coming up.
That's fine, but we're going to remember, we're going to be doing it for a week, so you know, give it a little circle.
It doesn't matter.
We're just agree to disagree. Yes, sir?
Well, I have a story. I've been shot at by paintballs twice. My sister had been shot at once walking from school. So for you to say paintballs, instead of bullets and paintballs, is still like the same thing. You might as well say, instead, it's not, I mean, even if they're not getting hurt or dying, they still getting hurt. My sister's scared to walk from school now. She walks from school every day during the summer, well, spring, and she's scared now. She rides the bus. And now, kids walking around like, they thinking they tough with all these paintball guns and BB guns. I don't have nothing, I have no body armor on, nothing, and I'm getting hit with paintballs just every day, walking around. So if you want to keep something in one place, keep it in one place instead of off the streets, keep it off the streets.
But let me interject one thing too, okay? I'm totally in agreement that they shouldn't be painting, shooting paintball guns anywhere but in a controlled environment. They shouldn't be doing it on any street, anywhere, anytime, anyplace. I agree with that. The reason that I gave them this venue, where I'm trying to get them venues, is so they can go do it in an environment where they don't hurt anybody. Like, they're doing it in a protected environment, they're doing it with the proper gear, and they're doing it like they're supposed to. And, and all it is is about trying to build relationships. I'm a hundred percent with you, anywhere in this city or anybody else, they shouldn't be shooting paintball guns. They shouldn't be shooting them out of cars, they shouldn't be shooting them walking up and down Wayne Avenue or whatever. I, I'm with you a hundred percent.
Okay, so if I get shot, can I shoot back?
That's not my decision.
I mean, I'm just saying, because I don't want to get like, get like, police run up on me or something.
I don't blame you.
So can I shoot back if they shoot at me?
That's not my decision.
Okay, because I don't want to get a target if I shoot back. That's it.
Well, once again, I don't even know your name, but I, I understand what the young man is saying again. Um, I think the whole paintball situation, I mean, providing a building for them has added on to the paintball situation. That Mike would have died down had they not had a place. So it's like saying, okay, we're giving you the green light to continue and to make this bigger. So as you make it bigger, I still have to go from place to place with a paintball gun. So if I see a kid now, I might want to shoot this kid with a paintball gun that's walking from school, which is not cool, you know? And like I said, once again, I mean, these are grown men a lot of times, and that building could have been used for something else. I'm glad that you felt the need to allow them to use it, but at that same time, they, they should have made a better decision. I feel like you should have made a better decision for them to use it for something that would have benefited the whole entire community instead of just some guys shooting some paintballs.
Anyone else like to speak? All right, we'll close the public here, comment period, and move on to the next. Which is the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, your consent agenda, which we discussed, consists of items D through K, and you had moved item G to an action item or an individual item. So again, your consent agenda items are items D through K as discussed, with item G moved to an individual action.
Is there a motion to?
I'm moved to adopt the consent agenda, D through K, with G being moved to an item requiring individual action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, bud?
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tim Hane.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember Anka.
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we've got item L, which is Z three eighteen Berkeley Realty Holdings. Jennifer, I think you're going to present that.
Item L is Z three eighteen Berkeley Realty Holdings. The property is located on the north corner of Berkeley Boulevard and Langston Drive. The applicant is requesting rezoning to allow the addition of a car wash operation as an allowable use within the general business conditional district. At the request at work session, I'm not going to go through the entire item. I'm just going to remind you that at the public hearing held on March nineteenth, no one appeared to speak either for or against the request. The planning commission at their meeting held on March twenty-sixth recommended approval of the rezoning to allow the amendment to permit the addition of a car wash operation as an allowable use within the general business conditional district. And has submitted development plans with the following modifications. Modification of interconnectivity and modification to allow the dumpster to be located within the type A landscape buffer. On April second and sixteenth of twenty-eighteenth, the council deferred action on the request, and it is recommended by motion except the recommendation of the planning commission. Any questions?
You have a recommendation before you?
I'm moved to deny.
I second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
You can't talk. No.
I just wanted to say a word.
You can't.
No.
Can you say anything?
No, you missed your, I'm sorry. I didn't, I should have known you were here and would want to talk, but you can't.
I hear that you went out, but I didn't know what you were saying. I thought I just got the report, please.
All right. That's okay. Uh, so it's been motion second, no discussion. All in favor, the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries. And the car wash is denied. Now, we have item G, which we pulled off the consent agenda for the crowd lift services. What's your take on that? You don't need to present again because we know, yeah, this is, you're good, yeah?
Motion to disapprove the request.
I'd like to amend the motion, but to bring it up during budget session.
Is that agreeable?
It's agreeable.
Okay, so you, so now we need a second to the, to the amendment.
Second.
All right, any discussion? So the, the motion is, to be sure we understand, is that we're going to basically defer this to the budget session. Everybody good with that? All those who have raised their hand? Opposed, same. Motion carries. All right. City manager report?
Mayor and Council, I would like to mention that, you know, we opened the Brian Meltzer Sports Complex, hosted a tournament that was here with over sixty teams. The comments that we received were very, very complimentary of the facility and our staff. And I do want to say, thank our staff and Way United for getting it off to a great start. And then we had Little League practices there, at least two nights the following week. And again, very good comments coming out. There'll be some things that we've got to change, but it is working for kids in the community to use it and for out-of-town people to help support and pay for it. So I just wanted to share, I do think the facility's off to a good start.
All right, thank you, sir. We have three proclamations, I'm just going to read those real quick. The first one is the Peace Officer Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which May fifteen falls is National Police Week. Whereas the members of law enforcement agency of the City of Goldsboro play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Goldsboro, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And whereas members of the Goldsboro Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas the men and women of law enforcement agency of the City of Goldsboro unceasingly provide a vital public support. Therefore, I check out Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, North County, and I call upon all citizens of the City of Goldsboro and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May thirteenth through nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Police Week, and with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which everyone may join in commemorating laws enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all our citizens. I further call upon all our citizens to observe May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. So I would like to say that they are having the, um, this Wednesday, May ninth, at nine o'clock at Wayne Community College, they have the annual Law Enforcement Observers Day. So if anybody would like to go, that would be great. It is this Wednesday, Wayne Community College, nine o'clock. And I would also like to say, if anybody, whenever you come upon a policeman, we would really appreciate it if you would thank them for their service or Highway Patrol or Sheriff or whoever it is in law enforcement because they really do have a tough job, and they really do make a difference in our community. So we do want to certainly thank them. Uh, next is the Municipal Courts Week. The Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of government exist throughout the world. The Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, Municipal Clerk should be mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. The Municipal Clerk serves as an information center on functions of local government and community. Municipal Clerk continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the competence of the Office of Municipal Clerk, therefore, I check out Mayor of the City of Goldsboro do recognize the week of May sixth through twelve, two thousand and eighteen, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our City Clerk Melissa Corser, our Deputy Clerk Laura Getz, and all Municipal Courts for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Well, I do want to tell you, if you've ever come into contact with Melissa or Laura, you know what professors are, they are, they do a great job of keeping us straight, and we very much appreciate what y'all do for us and for, for our city. Um, and I'm sure every council member is going to chime in and tell you that, too. Um, so the next is coats and ties proclamation. Whereas the southeast region of the United States, and especially our sunbelt states, experience hot, humid temperatures in the summer months of May through September. Soaring temperatures will soon reach the Carolinas and more specifically the Goldsboro area. During this time, all citizens are encouraged to be good stewards of our energy sources. While trying to keep their cool by wearing lightweight suits and ties, all men continue to swelter in the hot, humid weather. And it has become a tradition that we exchange our coats and ties for common sense and no longer deny ourselves some small degree of comfort and dignity. Therefore, I check out Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, by virtue of the powers of business of the hereby proclaimed reason above custom, and urge all Goldsboro citizens to doff off their coats and ties for the duration of the summer effective May one, and urge all Goldsboro citizens to doff off their coats and ties for the duration of the summer effective May one, two thousand eighteen, till September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. So, I guess this will be proper, you don't have to wear a coat and tie, but don't tell anybody I said that if you're supposed to, because I get in trouble enough myself not wearing coat and tie, so. With that, Councilman Williams, do you have any comments?
Um, since I was a youth, all my life, I have always cared for the less fortunate. I didn't have much, but I gladly shared what I had. I have always tried to defend others who were defenseless. I even got into situations where I was left for dead. Jumped by a gang of kids for trying to protect a teenage girl whose boyfriend beat her. I was left for dead on William Street and Highway seventy. I was beaten in the head with bricks by about twenty youth. I was only sixteen. This happened here in my city, the place where I was born, Goldsboro. I was alone that night, but as I lie unconscious, an angel appeared in the form of a man, a black man. He awoke me and helped me to my family. I had scabs and dried up blood in my scalp. Can you imagine? Your sixteen-year-old child laying on the side of the street, face down, dark and left for dead. You're probably wondering, why is he sharing this? I have always, throughout my life, experienced trials and injustices. I have always been unafraid of bold choices that help the poor and disadvantaged. I consistently fight for families, seniors, and our youth. When I decided to run for this seat, the people spoke. They said, we need a new set of eyes. They said, we are tired of business as usual. I have brought up the tough issues, I have called out wrongdoing, I have not sold out. So, just like when I was a sixteen-year-old kid, because I was a protector and I went against the status quo, I got beat up. And since I have been a city councilman and fighting the injustices within the council, within this city, I am being jumped. However, this isn't bricks to my head, it's malice, harassment, and slander. District one, let's continue to stand against business as usual. Just as you voted for me to do a couple of years ago, I want to thank all of your letters of support, emails, calls, and visits. I want to especially thank those who continue to stand, continue to speak up for what is right. Because if not you, then who? Continue to speak up for what is right. Seniors are depending on you, our youth are depending on you, our citizens are depending on you. And I am depending on you. God bless you, good night.
Councilman Broadway?
No comment, sir.
No more students?
I'm going to compose myself before I do speak. Um, I think Councilman Williams spoke very well, and I do believe that he does in his improper rights of doing due, oh, due process. Um, and I hope that he has received and, and, and enabled justice for whatever is going through his life and the trials and tribulations that he is facing. I will speak tonight on what Ms. Edwards was spoken, speaking about, because at first, her and I all didn't always see eye to eye, and we always agreed to disagree. But as I come to further know her, we come to agree and agree on all things. Specifically, about poverty and what David Hamm has spoken about in this city, and what the city specifically is, is eventually a strategic, or better yet, a master plan. And I've gone into studying these things from cities that I've lived in, both Atlanta and San Francisco and Los Angeles, that these areas have master plans that, and organizations that not only take care of the social aspects and social economics of their cities, but also the financial economic parts of the city. And I think the only way that we're going to be able to address poverty, we're going to be able to address gang relations, the only way that we're going to be able to address jobs and helping individuals be able to build jobs from the inside out to bring the outside in, not to bring the outside in the opposite way around to the inside of the circle, but build from inside out, is that we come up with a way and an organization inside of the City of Goldsboro that touches both social economics, financial economics, and all these other aspects that we have going on. I mean, the mayor has tried his hardest to work with the gangs the best way he knew how, with the paintballing, not saying it was the greatest idea, not saying it was the worst idea, but he did his best. I will say that it did deter certain things, and then I will say that it didn't deter certain things. But I will say he did his best. I will say there are other things that we need to address inside of this city, and we are going to address them one way or the other, and we will work together. So, I mean, it is, however you want to see it, however you want to do it, however the world wants to be able to put it out, but we all need to come together and come up with an organization inside of this city that will touch on the upper echelon, the middle class, and the lower class, and help each and every one of us. And that is the only way that we will bring our city to a great utopia, as they are talking about, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Makeup?
You know, uh, a few of us here on the council were invited by the MAC and Seymour Johnson Air Force Base on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of, a week ago, to fly out to Mountain Home Air Force Base and, uh, interact with the other F-15E squadron inside the United States. So, that we could share ideas, share, uh, ways that we can work better as, on ideas that they gave us, and come October, they're going to come here to, to do the same thing. And I can tell you, we flew out at about eight o'clock on Thursday morning, got there, went right into, to having meetings. Next morning, we woke up, started more meetings, and we were back in Goldsboro by seven PM Friday. So, it was a whirlwind tour. But I, I gained a greater appreciation of the military from the things I saw and how they're interested in, in giving the right atmosphere to their young airmen. And I look forward to their visit come, uh, October, and the only thing I ask is, let us feed them better than they fed us. Thank you, that's it.
Councilman Foster?
Um, I've been to several poverty meetings, uh, it's at a point now where when I go, I just, it's, it's the same old thing, and we, we just talk and talk and talk. Uh, it's nice to do presentations, it's, it's nice to have all these meeting, these meetings, it's nice to talk about it. But talk is cheap, and, and that's just real, as real as I can say it. Um, we discussed this on this council, but when it comes down to funding, there's no funding for the districts that need the money the most. You know, I, I'm, I'm quite upset with the fact that we even consider spending ten thousand dollars on marketing instead of spending that money somewhere for programming for kids or something for poverty. Uh, we have to do a better job, guys. Like I said, it's nice to do a presentation, but that's nothing. It's nice to talk about something, but that's nothing. We have to actually put some funding together, put some kind of resources, something together, and some action has to happen soon. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hand?
No comment.
All right, we stand adjourned, thank you everybody for coming.